Okay, before we get started, if you are here to do any comments, whether it be comments just general in the meeting, or for the public hearing, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna call who I think is here is not, or who I know is not a commissioner. I'm gonna ask you to please state your name.
This conference will now be recorded.
To state your name, and if you're giving a comment for the public, it's name and address, thank you. Tell me if you're giving comments just in general under Agenda Item Number Five, or if you plan on giving a public hearing a comment. So, Sarah. I see you.
Hi, Sarah Lovindal, 31 Hamlet Street and 680 Dede Street, and I will be giving a public comment.
Under just in the public hearing, or under the actual comments from the public?
I don't know. Comments, under the hearing, it's for the height.
Okay, so height or otherwise, how about that? Dana and Penny, are you guys giving comments today?
I'm sorry, Krista, did you say Tim Palmer?
No, I said Dana and Penny.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just going through who I see on my list. Okay, I'm gonna move on to whoever's labeled AA, please state your name and your address if you are giving public comments, and tell me where, if you're doing for building heights or otherwise. Okay, Mickey Walker.
I will not be giving any comments today.
Okay. Paul Hewitt. Hey, Steve Lawton.
Yes, I'm here, Steve Lawton.
Are you, can you give your address, please?
Oh, sure, I am sorry, 710 Jefferson Street.
And will you be giving your public comments in regards to the building height or something else?
Yes, I will, if, at the appropriate time, Krista.
Okay, thank you. How about Mark Holm? Mark Holm. E Doba.
Hi, this is Gary Robertson, I live in the urban growth boundary of Port Orford, 93420 Chris Law Lane.
Will you be giving comments for the building height, or during just the regular Agenda Number Five?
Yes, I will.
So for building heights?
For building heights, correct.
Okay, Cheryl Gorn.
Yes. Hello.
Will you, will you be giving comments for, during just the Agenda, for Agenda Number Five, or during the public hearing for building heights?
No.
No, you won't be giving any comments?
No, I'm in New York, and it's three hours later here.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I just heard about the meeting.
Okay, Tim Palmer.
Yes, I would like to give a comment in the public hearing about building heights, I live at 608 Oregon Street.
Perfect. Andy Mo.
I wrote an email, I will not be speaking today.
Okay, thank you. Caller four, can you identify yourself, your address, and if you will be speaking today? Okay, caller three. If any of the callers could unmute themselves, and I can figure out which one you are, that would be great, because I'm having a hard time. I don't know who you are, just says caller one, caller three, caller four, and caller five.
Krista, if I may, if somebody's calling in on their telephone, they might not have any options to mute or unmute.
They should have options to mute or unmute.
I've tried it before, and sometimes it doesn't work.
Okay. Callers one, three, or caller four, I see that you unmuted, could you identify yourself?
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, my name is Steve Montana, I'm at 25 Hamlet Street, and I would like to make a comment later about building heights.
Perfect, Mr. Montana, I have you down as caller four. Can callers one, three, or five, anybody who's on the phone that hasn't, could you, can you unmute if you can?
Krista, hold on, I'm gonna have to unmute him for you.
Okay.
Okay, caller one's unmuted.
Caller one, could you identify yourself?
I don't know if I'm caller one, my name is Lisa Harrison, I don't know what number I am as a caller.
You are caller one, perfect, so Lisa Harrison, okay.
Correct. I will not be making a public comment, do you still want my address?
Uh, yeah, just put it on the record.
250 Beacon Hill.
Okay, so Patty, will you mute caller one and caller four? Caller three, it wanted between caller three and caller five, just the next caller, say, if you haven't talked, just say, please.
John Ship and Kathy Bowden.
Okay, caller five is John Ship and Kathy Bowden. Okay, will you be speaking, or I did see that you did put in letters, will you be speaking as well?
Yes, we'd just like to voice our support for the 38-foot limit on buildings.
Okay, I will then call you during the public hearing. Will you undo Patty caller three? Caller three, if I haven't, if you haven't spoken yet, can you please state your name? Okay, Eric, yes, Crystal.
Oh, I don't have to speak until you're done with what you're doing.
No, I'm just trying to make sure everybody has the opportunity to participate.
I just wanted to let everybody know that if you didn't get to raise your hand or something, this is, you will still have an opportunity, but Krista is just trying to organize the meeting so that we don't have so much confusion every time somebody wants to talk. And then I would like to add one more thing, I would like to make a statement, I'm asking the chair if I can make a statement.
Hey, Crystal, I haven't, which part, I'm sorry, I just haven't started the meeting yet.
No, I mean, oh, I'm sorry, well, when we start the public hearing, okay.
Yeah, because I'm just trying to make sure, I haven't just started, I haven't even started the real, the regular meeting yet. Then I have Doug Calamar. Eric Overback, are you Overback, Eric, are you there?
I'm muted, yeah, I'm here.
Do you want to make a public statement, or a public comment during the public comments time?
Please.
Or would you like, okay, during the, during the public hearing, or under Agenda Five, just comments from the public?
Whatever's the fastest, whatever you just, whatever you want me to do, I'm here to address your height restriction proposal.
Okay, then I'll do it under public hearing. Tom Cavanes, are you here to make a comment?
Yes, thank you for calling on me, and sure, I would like to make a brief comment, thank you.
Could you state your address real quick, and then would it be for building heights?
Yes, it would be on that issue, and my address is 630 Tichner Street in Port Orford.
Okay, I think I went through everybody, so I am now gonna call the November 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting for the City of Port Orford to order. Some comments that I'd like to make prior to this meeting is, I'm going to limit, because of the length of the meeting and the things we're talking about, all comments will be limited to three minutes, both under Agenda, Agenda Item Number Five, and in the public hearing. So, what I'm asking is, is that if, if you have submitted an exhibit, please try to keep your comments very clear and concise, and as concise as possible. If somebody has said something that you want to say, maybe just refer to their comments as well. I will be sticking very clearly, or very, very to the three minutes, so we can try to get as much as possible. Commissioners, I know we received a lot of mail, a lot of exhibits emails, toward the end of the day. What I'm gonna ask is just do the best you can. One of the things that I will, we actually received another email for Exhibit 11 at 3:28. I'm guessing that most of you didn't have a chance to look at it at that point. What I am gonna tell the public is that we are, there will be another hearing at the City Council meeting on November 18, that if you would like anything in writing to be presented to the council, you please need to send it to Jessica Ginsburg, and I will try to put it in the chat here as soon as possible, by November 12th at noon. So, I will put in the chat, anything that you would like to be included in writing, excuse me, at the next public hearing, which will be at the City Council meeting, needs to be sent to Jessica Ginsburg by November 12th at noon, to be put into the packet. Like I said, I went through and tried to ask the visitors if you were speaking or not, just to help kind of figure out when we'll put you, or whatnot, but we'll do the best we can on that, and if at the time, I didn't get to you at this moment, if, to ask, but at the time when I get to that piece, if you want to make a comment, please, as I call through, if I miss anybody, I will ask, and I'll do my best to look. Callers, what I will have you do is there'll be a time that if I didn't get to you, I don't think I know who caller six is, I will have Patty unmute caller six at that time, and give you a moment to just, to give a comment. So, we have quite a bit, commissioners, to the agenda, do we have any more to add? Okay, commissioners, I assume that we all looked at the August 5th meeting minutes? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the, I'm sorry, October 5th, 2021?
Commissioner Mert. I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting, October 5th, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Reinhold, I second.
Do I have any discussion? Okay, all in favor, so Commissioner Mert.
Yes.
Commissioner Schofield.
Yes.
Commissioner Jesuit.
Yes.
Commissioner Thielen.
Yes.
Commissioner Reinhold.
Yes.
Commissioner Rossi.
Yes.
Commissioner Neeran is a yes, minutes are approved as written. Okay, now we're onto Agenda Item, Agenda Item Number Five. This would just be comments from the public, I'm asking if you're talking about building heights to wait until we get into the public hearing? If we have any other comments regarding any other thing besides building heights, this would be the time to do it.
Members of the Planning Commission, one of the things that I would certainly like to be able to address.
Hold on, Gary, would you state your name and your address, because our person who typed said the transcriptionist, I think, just listens to it.
Got it. Gary Robertson, and I live in the urban growth boundary, also have property in the town of Port Orford as well. My home address is 93420 Chris Law Lane. What I would definitely like to do is, when future meetings are going to address vacation rentals, I would certainly like to be included on that, there's, I understand there's been a lot of discussion about it. I am both been renting vacation rentals for the past years, and have also been a vacation rental host for the last 14 years. And I think one of the things that I think would be very helpful, would be to be able to share my experiences as a host, and how I certainly do things to continue to make things a much more neighborhood kind of feel, to eliminate a lot of the issues that have been going on that you hear in the press, and in other cities. But I would just like to be able to address that in the future, thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments regarding, or from the public regarding anything but building heights? Okay, Crystal, I'm gonna move on now to Agenda Item Number Six, Public Hearing, so before I open the public hearing, do you have something you need to?
I do. First, I wanna tell you thank you for organizing the meeting, and trying to get everybody accommodated. I know it's a job on this kind of a virtual hearing. I would like to read information about public access to meetings held by a governing body of a public body, and this was passed by the legislature and signed into law January 1st, 2022, in Oregon. And this is House Bill 2560. And here is the summary. House Bill 2560 requires all meetings held by a governing body of a public body to reasonably provide the public with an opportunity to access and attend the meeting by telephone, video, or other electronic or virtual means, and to allow oral and written testimony by electronic or virtual means when in-person testimony is loud. These requirements apply to hearings under comprehensive land use and county planning and zoning statutes, but do not apply to contested case hearings under the Administrative Procedures Act. Again, this was signed into law January 1, 2022. So this is an accommodation statement that the legislature has adopted, because people are having virtual meetings, and this wasn't formerly included as a, in the law, as a way to accommodate citizen comments, and I wanted to read it because we are having a public hearing today, and the City of Port Orford has made every effort to accommodate the citizens of Port Orford. Thank you. And I am the City Planner, Crystal Shoji.
Thank you, Crystal. So, I am now going to call this legislative hearing for the Port Orford Planning Commission to order, it will be called to order at 3:48 PM on November 2nd. The purpose of this hearing is that the Port Orford City Council has been considering height amendments. They adopted some amendments in early 2021, and asked the Planning Commission to make recommendations about some specific height issues, which have now been considered, and are now included in today's public hearing. The recommendations of the Planning Commission are the topic of this public hearing. These recommendations, now after, if the Planning Commission decides to approve them, will then go to the City Council meeting, which again, will be held on November 18th for final consideration and/or approval. So the Planning Commission has been, for over the past year, it's been seeking input from all citizens, or landowners within Port Orford, and there have been a number of public workshops and meetings that we have taken comments for. The proposal that we have in front of us today is for legislative amendments, excuse me, legislative amendments to the text of the zoning ordinance. We will not need to do any conflict of interest statements, any of the commissioners on the Planning Commission, because this is a legislative public hearing regarding the text of the ordinance that could apply to many properties within the City of Port Orford. We first will have the staff report, go through the staff report that had been written by City Planner Crystal Shoji, and then we'll do some testimony, so then that'll be the time for everybody. If you've given me, told me that you wanted to talk about building heights, that'll be the time for you to discuss that. And then, the Planning Commission will then discuss, and then we'll have motions to see what we want to do at that point. Pamela, Commissioner Mert, can you take, I don't understand your question.
Did I submit a question?
You said, does Crystal mean 2021, not 2022?
Oh, when she just read the law, she stated 2022.
Well, that's 2022, that law begins January 1st, 2022.
Thank you.
And I believe that law is required of all public meetings, including school board meetings.
I just, I just read it because this is the solution that the government is adopting, and I feel it pertains to what we're doing, because all of the cities have been trying to figure out how they can best accommodate the public.
Thank you for clarifying.
And then, then we'll, like I said, we'll have a discussion after testimony, and a decision by the Planning Commission. I am, again, limiting public comments to three minutes, so please make sure your comments are clear and concise, so we can get everybody in. If you haven't, we've sent all the exhibits to the Planning Commissioners, and I've read much as I could as well. When I call you, please again, give me your name and the address in which you reside at. If you want to agree with somebody, it might be easier to say, I agree with Patty, with her comments. So, Crystal, did I miss anything? Patty, did I miss anything? Okay, so.
I think I was correct, thank you.
There you go, Crystal, it's all up to you now.
All right, I will be reading or sharing the staff report, and you can follow along if you have the written document. I will try to point out what part of the page I'm on for sections that I'm referring to. So the first page, down past the middle, we have the subject, and the subject of this meeting is code amendments, and it's proposed ordinance number 2203. And this is what the Port Orford Planning Commission has recommended so far. And this is included as Attachment A, it shows all the language that the Planning Commission has recommended for this public hearing. A map of the city zoning is included as Attachment B. It's a little bit hard to read, but especially only in the residential areas, because the two residential areas are pink, and you can't quite tell online which is which, but I don't think that that's, that that's something we're discussing a lot in the residential areas today, so that shouldn't be a problem. On the staff report on the first page, we have a little dotted line there around some wording, and I just want to remind you that when you see information in italics in the staff report, that means it's directly out of an ordinance of the city or state law. And so the rest of that, when we have findings, those are, that's what it's called when we respond to the state law, and try to explain how we're complying with the state law, or not. So, let's begin then with the requirements for amendments to zoning ordinance and comp plan, and that would start at the top of Page Two. So this one, as your chair has said, is a text amendment. It applies broadly throughout the city, and broadly to properties, and really affects everyone in the city. So the code states that an amendment is only supposed to be made by the Planning Commission, with a recommendation of the Planning Commission, or by the City Council, and this particular topic was brought to the Planning Commission, and the City Council asked them to be involved in making a recommendation to the council. The section 17.40.060 provides rules for notice of a public hearing, and those are right out of state law, and we are complying with that, we sent a notice, it's called Measure 56 Notice, in casual situations. This was required by the legislature, it requires exactly how that notice has to be stated. So if you look at the front of the notice that you got in the mail, if you got one, it, it's, it kind of sounds negative, it sounds like your property's going to lose value and things like that, and that is required language. Nobody can speak for everybody in the city, but the legislature puts that, wants that on there so that people will look into what's happening, and make sure that they testify if they don't agree with it. So a copy of that notice is included in your packet, and I believe that is Attachment C. Yes, it is Attachment C. Then we also have another notice in there, that's Attachment D, we have to let DLCD know at the state level 35 days ahead of time, what it is that we are planning to do, and what language we are planning to adopt. So we just put that in there so that you could see it. Then at the bottom of Page Two, we begin addressing the criteria of the zone text change. So, it says that an amendment is appropriate when there are findings that all of the following exist. And so you go to the top of Page Three, and it says, either the original wording or designation was made in error, or the amendment is justified due to changing circumstances. The finding here would be that there have been changing circumstances, because this has been in the code, I believe, since the early 80s, when this particular code was adopted. has been in the code, I believe, since the early 80s when this particular code was adopted. So certainly things have changed. And also, any amendment has to comply with the Port Orford Comprehensive Plan Goals and Policies. And you will see on page three that we have listed some of the policies out of the city plan. Some of them are about citizen involvement. It just says that citizens will have opportunities to be involved and to speak and to be saying their opinions on these things, and Port Orford is an active city, and we have had a lot of information coming from all sides. So page four of the staff report addresses statewide planning goal nine, economic development. And remember, these are just suggested findings that I put in here because the Planning Commission said that they, that they wanted to approve this and that they thought that they were doing a good thing for the city, and so that's what the findings are based on. The Planning Commission can change the findings. There are people in the city who do not agree with these findings. These are just findings to take care of what, it was my opinion that the Planning Commission was saying at the time. At the bottom of page four, there's some findings out of the document Looking to the Future that's about the Battle Rock area when we had a lot of public involvement in that area. And those are in italics, again, they're right close to the bottom of the page. And out of chapter seven, the report does talk about limiting the scale and footprint of uses in both residential and commercial areas, and it talks about the possibility of implementing more stringent height restrictions. At the bottom of page four, it says that the map must be compatible with the surrounding zoning, and we don't, we're not really doing a map change, although we have a small illustration or map within the zoning ordinance that you will see in the, I mean, the proposed map that is in your proposed ordinance. But that's not really a map amendment. We're not proposing to change the zoning of the map, but we are proposing to change the height restrictions within one zone. So there's some possible conclusions there on page five, and then recommendations. Remember, the Planning Commission has the authority and the responsibility to listen to the public and try to sort out what people are saying, try to understand, and then most of all, to apply their own opinion to what they think is best for the city. And that's why people serve on the Planning Commission, and sometimes they get a lot of flack, but that's their job. So I would not recommend carrying this hearing over because the council in Port Orford, when you have a zone change of any kind, or a text change, or a map change or anything, they have to act on that as well as the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission makes a recommendation, and then the council holds an entirely new hearing. So my recommendation is that this Planning Commission could make their recommendation based on what they hear today and what they've already heard in the past, and then send it on to the council, and if people have more comments or more, more to add, then that could be done at the council level because there will be a completely new hearing at the city council. And that hearing is listed on the first page, November 18 at 5:30 PM, also a virtual hearing. So that concludes my staff report unless we have some questions on the staff report And if there is right now, you can ask me, but if you want to ask anything later, that's okay too. Thank you.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for, do you guys have any questions for Crystal regarding the staff report? Okay, so what I'm going to do now is I'm going to open up for public testimony. I'm going to go just down my, my list of people who I asked, and I do see some more came in, so I will call on you as I get to you. What I'm going to ask again for the record is to state your name, the address, your address, please. And like I said, I will be keeping everybody's testimony to three minutes, so please keep your testimonies very clear and concise. So the first one I'm going to call.
I probably should have led right into this, I'm sorry. May I?
Yes.
This is Crystal Shoji. We do need to take in the exhibits publicly that we have received, and then as people speak, if they have information that they're going to send to the Planning Commission or to the record right after this, then they can go ahead and say what they are and say who they are, and we can take those exhibits in today. Otherwise, we can leave your exhibits till the council meeting.
Do I need to go through every exhibit?
I think Patty, Patty could, Patty, do you want to do that or do you want me to do that?
Go ahead, Crystal.
Okay, so.
I'll list it if you don't, if you miss any.
Okay, so the exhibits that we have received to date are exhibit one, letter from David Bassett. These are all in writing, so you don't have to take it down. Exhibit two, letter from Sharon Rock. Exhibit three, letter from attorney David C. Johnson from Gold Beach. Exhibit four, email from Chris Hawthorne. Exhibit five, email from Andrew Mihalovich, I believe I said, I might have said it right. Exhibit six, letter from Eric Oberbeck and Mr. and Mrs. A.C. Johnson. Exhibit seven, letter from Ann Valisis. Exhibit eight, 102 pages of submissions from various people from Ann Valisis. Exhibit nine, letter from Kathy Bowden. Exhibit 10, letter from John Ship. And exhibit 11, that I think Krista, except I should say the Planning Commission Chair mentioned today, and what is that?
That is another email from Dave Bassett.
Okay. And that's what we have so far, and then each person who is submitting something today should state that, and then we will take that in as an exhibit.
So we are on exhibits one through 11, so anything after that, then we'll start doing 12 and so forth. So, okay, I think we're ready now. So Sarah Lovindol, please unmute yourself.
Yep. Go ahead. All right, Sarah Lovindol, 31 Hamlet Street. Last November, I sent a letter to the plant, to the city council on this subject, and I just want to, first off, thank Crystal for doing a great job on her summary and findings, and I want to thank all the planning members and commissioners for your really hard work because this is not a job that everybody loves, but it's so well appreciated by us. I spoke, I participated, there were 100 people that signed a petition last year regarding lowering the heights in Port Orford, and I personally probably spoke to 60 of our residents in the city, and I wanted to make that back clear because there's just a, just a few of us, but there is a strong sentiment out there that we need to grow reasonably, which means we need to restrict our building heights. So I strongly support the changes that the Planning Commission has brought forward, and I will just leave it at that, and I just hope that you will consider the thoughts of the wider community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Steve Lawton, I have you next on my list.
Steve Lawton, 710 Jefferson Street. I too want to thank the Planning Commission and Crystal for your hard work. I know it's not easy, so thank you for your volunteer efforts for our community. I would like to speak to support the proposed ordinance 220203 that reduces the allowable building heights and eliminates 17.32.50 additional standards governing conditional uses, which I consider a significant loophole. This proposed ordinance is consistent with our vision. According to the planning document Looking to the Future, it states that Port Orford has an opportunity through city planning and zoning to maintain the unique character of Port Orford in a manner that it will protect the existing character of the community and assist in retaining small-town atmosphere. I think this proposed ordinance also finds the appropriate balance and, and the needs between a local healthy economy, flexibility in design for houses and commercial buildings, affordable housing, the protection of our small coastal communities' character and social fabric, maintaining the livability within our community, and still providing financial returns for real estate investors. We all know that we have an inadequate city water system and water supply and just pulling ourselves out of a water conservation and building moratorium. However, do note that 10 days ago at the city council meeting, the Public Works Director, John Isidore, stated that we are still in the danger zone. Also, the city administrator stated 10 days ago at that same meeting that both she and the director of Public Works are worried about having adequate water pressure to fight a fire. Buildings taller than 35 feet will place a disproportionate demand on the aging and inadequate city water and sewer system, and it will require significant and costly infrastructure improvements. We also know that the planning document Looking to the Future states that the present pipe sizes in the MU10 zone are inadequate to handle the flow necessary in a fire emergency. Our current city service development charges will not fully cover the cost of city system improvements, and it seems unfair to ask the residents to have to pay for those costs for the taller buildings and subsidize the investors for such buildings. Lowering the allowable building height will not harm our local economy. At the beginning of 2020, Curry County was at a record-low unemployment rate of 3.9%. Currently, our Port Orford real estate market and house construction is booming and very strong. There's been a significant addition of short-term vacation rentals, and if we look at the last seven major commercial buildings that have been built in the city of Port Orford, they're all under 35 feet. Redfish Restaurant and Gallery, Gold Beach Lumber, Dollar General, Portside Market and Deli, which is the old TJ's, the Mountain Sea.
Mr. Lawton, that's three minutes. Could you finish up, please?
Yes. And so all of these buildings have been existed within 35 feet. Lastly, buildings taller than 35 feet will harm our neighborhoods and community livability, especially with no off-street parking requirements, which would only increase the number of cars and trucks parked on neighborhood streets. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. I'm going to go down to Gary Robertson. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, are you able to hear me now?
Yes, if you can see your name and.
I got about 20 seconds of everything that Steve said. It's just that everything just keeps freezing up, so I don't know what's going on. I have a super fast interconnection, but don't know. A couple of things that I want to go, go through about this, and one of the things that I wish, like, one of the things that I do, I do design work, and again, my address is 93420 Chris LaLaine, within the urban growth boundary. One of the things that, even with 35 feet, it hasn't become, there was a reason that 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 figure came up and why it's even countywide and it's popular throughout the state. And one of the things that, when you're talking about building a two-story house, there's a lot of things that people will think, well, you want to have two stories and there's, and you're going to have 10-foot ceilings. If that's only 20 feet, you've got plenty of room. But the thing is, is that it doesn't take in fact that, one, that works great on level ground, but even in an example of a two-story building with two 10-foot ceilings, you will basically, you know, if you build on a, on a crawl space foundation, there's two feet right there, 13 inches for the subfloor, 10 feet for the ceiling. If you're doing a, no interior bearing walls, there's 17 inches for the second floor, 10 feet for the ceiling on that, six inches for the, for the attic venting plus if you're doing a 612 pitch, and you're over. And that's just a two-story house, 10-foot ceilings, nothing extravagant. And that's on level ground. One of the big issues and one of the things at 35 feet, and we've all in the building and design community have had to deal with is, once it starts getting into areas on a slope, you need it, even to do that. So it's like, I would like to have 10-foot ceilings, or I want to do something like this. You're going to start with this kind of a limitation, it's going to, it's going to start going down. I've done single-story houses on a slope that have been tough to fit in 35 feet due to the nature of the slope. One of the other, the things that, that's also in here is limiting items to two stories. And again, when you're on sloped property, right, a foundation, it has a 9-foot ceiling in it, and so then you're eliminating the idea of being able to put a daylight basement in there of use case since it's there, but that would make it three-story. My neighbor to the next to me, they have that, that kind of thing in their property. They're not over 35 feet, but they definitely have three stories in there. It's just one of the things that it's, you know, it's, it's putting more constraints on us, and as a designer, I'll deal with any regulations that are going to come up there. However, I think it's going to be of, it'll lead to a lot more low-slope or flat, flat-roofed buildings. And I can already hear the next thing that's going to come out, and it's like, well, everything is looking too modern, it's too modern, it doesn't fit with a small-town feel.
Can I have you wrap up, please?
Okay. And one of the other things about this is that there are thousands of examples of quaint small towns that everybody loves through Europe, through Africa, every continent. Buildings are taller than 30 feet, but it does not eliminate that small-town feel or small-village feel, and a lot of those have come about because of topography, because of different conditions that they have. There's a lot of things to consider about this.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Sure, thank you.
Sorry to cut you off, that was 3:48. I'm going to go down now to Tim Palmer.
Thank you, thank you very much, Chairman Nyroth. I live at 608 Oregon Street, and I'd like to make this statement in support of the height ordinance that the Planning Commission has had under consideration for more than a year now. First, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission members and the chair and our city planner, Crystal Shoji, for the tenacious and diligent work that you've done spanning many months. Public service is really appreciated here. The 35-foot height for commercial and industrial zones was arrived at following a long and open public process. It involved a lot of people, including anyone who is interested in participating, and it is, in my opinion, an excellent compromise, recognizing many points of view. The background work, the official findings by planner Shoji, the extensive research that was undertaken by many people is impressive and a credit to the Planning Commission's approach to this opportunity. I'm impressed by how many towns up and down the coast have already enacted height restricting ordinances, many of them much more stringent than ours will be. These have served those communities well, and they've weathered the test of time and opposition and even legal challenges. Thus, there's ample precedent for communities such as ours approaching this issue in a successful way. This is not, explicitly not, an anti-growth measure, but on the contrary, one that will promote quality and manageable growth, and in fact, a measure that will encourage positive growth by protecting the investments that people make. I think it's fair to say that the vast majority of those investments, by far, will be by people who have no plans or no desires to build structures taller than 35 feet. For more detailed case of support here, I'd like to refer, refer you to the email sent to you earlier today by my wife, Ann Valisis, who unfortunately had another pressing commitment and can't be with us right now. If by chance any Planning Commission member. If by chance any Planning Commission members have not seen Ann's statement, please let her know, and she'll resend it. I encourage you to pass this measure and to forward it on to the city council for proper adoption. Your work here signals that Port Orford can take the kind of thoughtful, respectful, and inclusive action that mark it as a community that's desirable for anyone wanting to live here, to do business here, or to invest here for the future. Thank you very much for this chance to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Now, we're gonna go Patty. Patty, I need you to unmute caller four, which is Steve Montana. Perfect. Can you say your name again and your address? I'm sorry.
This is Steve Montana at twenty-five Hamlet Street. And I would like to thank the Planning Commission for listening to the citizens here today, and say a special hello to Crystal. She's helped me in the past, I think she might remember me from years ago. I'm gonna keep my time short. I agree in full with everything Steve Lawton presented, and certainly I am on board with everything Tim Palmer just presented in the most eloquent manner. I'm all for it. I've been living here for close to thirty years. I love Port Orford, its old-town feel. We can't be in competition with the town of Banden, and I wouldn't want to be, but the big, drawn Banden is old-town. Tourists come, they want to see the old-town. And if we start looking like some big, spread-out thing, I don't want that. So, keep the building limits. I really appreciate what the Planning Commission has proposed to adopt. I hope they pass it today. Thank you very much. That's my time.
Thank you, Mr. Montana. Patty, would you please unmute caller five? If you see them still here.
I'm not seeing caller five.
Okay, we'll move on to the next one, then. Eric Overbeck.
Commissioner Nerath and Planning Commission members, my name is Eric Overbeck, and I'm a longtime resident of Curry County and have an economic interest in a commercial building on the south end of town. I'm writing on behalf of myself and the current owners of the property. In our opinion, your reducing the building height of new commercial building constitutes a taking by the city of property rights, which people have owned and enjoyed for years. This taking is not justified and is not warranted by any actual or perceived problems. As you know, land-use decisions are governed by goals. And Goal Nine deals with economic development and requires that local governments maintain a working inventory of areas suitable for economic growth. Goal Ten deals with housing and requires that the city support adequate housing, which is a fundamental building block of a healthy community. It's our opinion that the proposed ordinance conflicts with Goals Nine and Ten and are the basis for an appeal to the state to overturn this proposed ordinance if it is passed. I question how this proposed height restriction benefits the community of Port Orford and helps to lessen the current housing shortage and stimulate our local economy. This proposal was initiated by a newer arrival to Port Orford, who built his beach getaway in a commercially-zoned area and who is now trying to protect his investment. Over this fifty-year period, the current building codes have not caused significant changes to the city or vast unplanned development. Your hopes of restricting growth will only further weaken the city by limiting new development and the opportunity to rebuild our failing infrastructure. I challenge you to be smarter than that and to not be deceived and misled. Finally, your attempt to limit building heights will serve to discourage investment and new development, which is what Port Orford desperately needs to pay for the degraded city services.
Hey, Larry. Listening to the planning
Mr. Burns. I'm sorry, Mr. Overbeck. Mr. Burns, you are on. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Overbeck, I stopped your time. Go ahead and complete.
All right, I'll finish. Finally, your attempt to limit building heights will serve to discourage investment and new development, which is what Port Orford needs to pay for the degraded city services. Your statement that this proposal will not lower property values is, things have changed, is disingenuous. What has changed? How does limiting footprints and usage within the commercial area support Goals Nine and Ten? Finally, your actions ensure that your legacy to our children is an antiquated water system that provides unhealthy and very costly water and an outdated sewer system that discharges the city's treated sewer into the sewage into the ocean. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Overbeck. Now, Mr. Calvinese.
Hi, am I unmuted?
You are.
Just double-checking, thank you. I'll just keep it brief, I guess.
Can you say your name and address, please?
Sorry, Tom Calvinese, I live at six-three-zero Tichner Street in Port Orford. I just want to thank you all for your thoughtful consideration and your commitment to including residents in the process, and I've observed that over some time now, so thank you for that. Thank you, Planner Shoji, for your thoughtful consideration of the matter and for producing what I think is a very well-put-together set of findings. And I guess I'll just say that, in the end, I echo what I've heard from previous speakers, Sarah, Steve, from Tim, and others. And I guess I'll just say that I support the adoption of the findings from the planner and the adoption of the proposed ordinance twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two dash oh-three to the city council as written. And thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Calvinese. I see Jen Head jumped on, and I'm, Jen, I'm assuming you want to talk about building You're unmuted, Jen.
Okay, can you hear me?
Can now, yep.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Jennifer Head. I reside at fourteen-thirty-seven Jackson Street. I have prepared a statement in support of lowering building heights and submitting the findings and the proposed ordinance as written. Greetings, Planning Commissioners, City Planner, and City Administrators. Thank you for your dedication to our community. I'd like to start by briefly summarizing the history of community input throughout this process, which has been overwhelmingly in favor of lowering building heights. Nearly a year ago, on November nineteenth, twenty-twenty, the Planning Commission met to discuss the possibility of lowering building heights throughout the city limits. In less than two weeks, the community submitted just over thirty letters and approximately seventy signatures, approximately a hundred voices in total, in support of lowering building heights. Again, in February twenty-twenty-one, the community collected one-hundred-and-sixty signatures in support of lowering building heights in the Four Sea to the compromised height of thirty-five feet and eliminating exemptions, with the exception of port activities in the marine zone. These letters and signatures have been entered into the record multiple times. After reading the findings of the Commission and City Planner, as well as proposed ordinance twenty-two zero-two dash zero-three, it is clear that the majority voice of the community has been heard. As the findings of the City Planner and Planning Commission show, this process was in compliance with Oregon Revised Statutes, statewide planning goals, municipal code, and is aligned with our unified community vision, as outlined in the Looking to the Future document, which is referenced within the findings under consideration today. I also want to echo the concerns and opinions of my other community members in support of lowering building heights, as well as concerns regarding the negative effect of development on our city infrastructure, such as water. In closing, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for their diligent work on this issue, and also Crystal Shoji, City Planner, for her role in this process and her hard work in preparing the findings and the language of the proposed ordinance. Lastly, I'd like to urge the Planning Commission to adopt the findings outlined by the City Planner and to submit proposed ordinance twenty-two zero-two dash zero-three to the city council as currently written or with more restrictive language, but not less. Thank you again for your commitment to our community, and it's my understanding that a portion of the signatures did not make it into the exhibits for today's meeting, so I will send them after the meeting today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I believe I've gotten everybody that I talked to prior to the meeting. I know Amy, you jumped in after the meeting, would you like to have any testimony? Could you unmute yourself, Amy?
Can you hear me?
I can now, yes.
Okay. I apologize for being late to the meeting. I would like to start off by saying thank you to the Planning Commission for all the work they've done on this. About a year ago, when we heard that this was being proposed, my family and I were immediately just upset at the thought of, you know, taller buildings going up in Port Orford. We moved here because we love to look at the ocean, we love to see the trees, and we definitely didn't move from coast to coast to relocate to be in a city. We love Port Orford exactly the way it is and don't feel that there is any need to have buildings taller than thirty-five feet. We are in support of keeping the height restrictions and in support that they not get any, that there be no changes made. My nine-year-old, we've signed the petitions that came around about a year ago, and our nine-year-old's, our then-eight-year-old even wrote a letter because he was so upset at the thought of this moving forward. So, we'd like to just finish up by saying thank you for all the hard work that the Planning Commission has put in, all the research they've done, and we are in support of keeping the building height restrictions at no more than thirty-five feet.
Thank you, Amy, I appreciate it. Okay, I'm gonna go back to, I have everybody now on the list, I did call some names out and nobody replied or answered. So, Patty, I'm gonna have you unmute caller three, that was the only caller that I didn't hear from, to see if caller three wants to give. Caller three, would you like to give any testimony? Okay, Patty, I'm gonna have you remute caller three. Caller six joined us, caller six, could you unmute caller six, Patty? Caller six, would you like to give testimony? Okay, Patty, I'm gonna have you mute caller six. I did not hear from Mark Home, Paul Hewitts, Andy Mo. I see Jack, go ahead, Andy, I see you now, please state your name and address.
Andrew Mahalovich. I have two lots on D Terrace and one on DeeDee Street, and I also bought a piece of property in the urban growth boundary. My concern is a citywide height limit, the properties that I own would never be in anyone's view. My goal was to live in the woods, you know, you either got the ocean view here or you got the woods. I chose the woods, but I'm in the city limits. So, my concern is, I feel like it should be, each property should be judged on its own merits. And the other thing I want to state is that it seems to me like limiting something to prevent a failing infrastructure is backwards to me. The infrastructure should be fixed, and then let's determine what can be done as far as the heights of the buildings. I'm not all for skyscrapers and things like that to take away from the small-town feeling, but I think that there should be a compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to give testimony that did not speak?
Hello, Jacqueline Ile up here.
Perfect, go ahead.
I reside at four-two-eighth Street, and I own three-fifty-six-seven Street. I have a lot of interesting points of view on this, just being around here forever, because we got houses like the Painted Lady and the Old Lindbergh House, which are very old houses that were built at the turn of the century, that are very, very tall. And then, in my construction experience, this is kind of a problem with building out. If you build out, you got to choose, do you want your garden? Do you want parking? Do you want to cut down more trees? Or do you want to go up? If you go up, you can still have those things. I think this stuff should be judged on a case-by-case basis, and if it goes over a certain height, require them to have a standalone fire suppression unit. I mean, it's pretty simple, just be like, hey, we can't do that, you gotta deal with yourself, there we go. And, you know, there's tons of places around town here that, you can look around, and you can see, it's not gonna block anyone's view. And building lower and wider is going to require us to cut more trees. And then, it's, like I said earlier, it's gonna limit parking, and I don't, I think the way we're going about this is we're not looking at all the points of view, it's kind of a little bit backwards, honestly. But you gotta really consider, how many people are gonna actually start just building a bunch of stuff over thirty-five feet? I mean, there's gonna be a few things, but no, everyone's not gonna start doing that. So, yeah, I really think this should, this needs to be looked at a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you. Are you done, Jackie?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you so much. Is there anybody else that I didn't get to that wants to put some testimony into the Okay, I am now going to close the hearing. So, this hearing has been closed on November second at four-thirty-four PM, so commissioners, now it's our
Hello?
Hello?
Oh, crap.
Paul, would you like to give some testimony?
There we go, did that work now?
That works better, yes.
Okay. So, forty-two-six-ten Port Orford Loop is my address, current address. Anyways, I've lived in the city often, and having been a contractor here, in and out for, plus my father, for the better part of, you know, twenty-seven years, limiting height restrictions limits our ability to build multifamily housing in certain zones. It eliminates the ability to, it eliminates that because that third story in the middle is almost free. You know, you build your roof and your foundation holds two stories up, your foundation actually holds three stories up, you know. Gary from Adoba had some good points and whatnot. I think the Planning Commission needs to look back at the amount of properties that it devalues, because Eric Overbeck's points were absolutely on point, there's no reason for me to repeat them. Your goals and what you're supposed to do is not, this whole fight over putting, you know, basically started by some people that don't want a hotel in front of them, it doesn't add to our community. This ordinance or limiting our height restrictions does not, even, I bet you if you were to go measure Tom's house, I bet you he exceeds thirty-five feet, he's got six-twelve pitch, two and a half stories, you know, but then he's standing out here, let's limit our height restrictions except for the marine zone. Not really appropriate. And I think that the city is just asking, or basically, a few people in the city, let's say one hundred, and our population's twelve hundred, so ten percent of the city came out, or people got signatures from ten percent of the people on a petition. So ten percent of the ci- city came out, or people got signatures from ten percent of the people on a petition. Problem. There's no problem. All of a sudden have a problem here. There hasn't been a problem here. The Louis-Napp Hotel was taller, um, Battle Rock Park, and we're talking about changing the feel of the community. Well, once again, that's, uh, that's how growth happens, and we're not changing the feel of the community. We still have our historic houses. We still have our dock. We have a high dock. What are there two? Two functional commercial high docks in the world, one in Perth, Australia, one in Port Orford, Oregon. Our tourist attractions are not affected. Um, it's just time for this to be tabled. And, you know, maybe the city council will table it, whether whichever way you guys vote, but I think you're looking at a Luba lawsuit. That's just my personal opinion. There's, there's a lot of property to, to be developed that, you know, on the hillsides is gonna be taller than thirty-five feet. So, that's my two bits.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. And that was Paul Hewitt. Um, that was for our transcribers. So, I'm now gonna close this hearing. It is four thirty-eight PM on November second. Um, so, ca- our commissioners, do we have any conversation, any questions? I do have a question, and I think this might be for Crystal. And it's based off of, um, Chris Hawthorne's exhibit. So he made a comment. I think he's exhibit four. I have so many exhibits at this point. Um, but he had mentioned in the seventeen-point-one-two-point-zero-nine-zero Battle Rock Mixed Use Zone. Um, and when, and this is on page three of your report, Crystal, that he would like... ...or why. Um, any per, and this was number fifteen, "Any permitted uses where building heights requests to exceed thirty-five feet shall be subject to site plan review to comply with the provisions set forth in seven, chapter seventeen-point-three-three-point," I don't know what that is, "site review plan." So I don't remember why we took that out. He did say that many years, about fifteen years ago, there was a community push to create that zone specifically in that, and our height restriction specifically in that zone. So it was a compromise, that particular, um, piece was a compromise. So I was just wondering about that.
Well, the, the, um, taller buildings are allowed in the Battle Rock Zone right now with a conditional use permit. So if you go back to page three of the staff report, you will see the language that is proposed to be taken out by the planning commission at this time. On page three at the top, it has section seventeen-twelve-point-zero-nine-zero Bottle, Battle Rock Mixed Use Zone, ten MU. B, permitted uses outright. In the ten MU zone, the following uses are permitted outright, subject to the conditions within this chapter. And then the part that is crossed out says, "Any permitted use where building height exceeds thirty-five feet shall be subject to a site plan review to comply with the provisions set forth in chapter seventeen-thirty-three." And then it talks about design standards, and again, um, design standards has the same limitation, the thirty-five feet, anything exceeding thirty-five feet crossed out. So then, um, you need to go to chapter seventeen-thirty-three and see what we've done with that. And, um, I don't, I don't think we've had to do anything with that because we're still having site plan review. We're just not allowing the bill, the taller buildings like we used to because the site plan review is still going to apply to a larger building. But the height restrictions, um, in this particular proposed code have been reduced so that there's not an option to go above the thirty-five feet.
Okay.
Now, if you guys didn't agree with that and you wanted to go back, that would be an easy enough thing to do. You just take that section of the code where we did the crossouts and go back to leaving it the way it is.
Well, and I just looked because I think this worked, and, and again, I was just reading and I wanted to ask. I, I just was looking at Mr. Hawthorne's exhibit, and I believe, you know, fifteen years ago, was that Patty, was that the last time that this particular code had been really looked for? Patty?
It was.
It was, okay. And so I was wondering how much, um, you know, the community had been involved then, um...
Well, you haven't had a lot of applications that had to come to the planning commission in the Battle Rock Zone. I mean, they ma- maybe Patty could say whether she's doing building permits, but they haven't had to come to the planning commission 'cause they haven't been proposed above thirty-five feet or larger buildings.
Okay, and who does the site plan review? Like, is that something that comes to the planning commission or is that...
I believe so. It's almost like a conditional use permit. The reason we don't use conditional use permit is that, uh, conditional use permit has certain, um, it, it, a conditional use permit has to be achieved if they do the right thing, and a site plan review is a little bit different process, but it's very similar.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any other questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Thielen.
Y- yes, I have just a, a question, or maybe it's a clarification. Uh, what the, uh, in the ten MU zone, what, didn't the city council set that at thirty-five feet? And this is just a, a strikeout of a, of an apparent, um, just to get rid of some stuff. I, I don't think we are voting on, on thirty-five feet. I think thirty-five feet has been established. So this would only affect, uh, uh, so this would only affect, uh, would affect nothing, really. The, the, any, any large building would still have to go through the, uh, uh, design standards.
This, um, the difference is that the council did make it thirty-five feet, I believe, that it's already thirty-five feet.
Okay.
If I re- if I remember correctly. Patty might correct me.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, uh, this is saying if you go above thirty-five feet. So that's what you had, that's what you have in your code now. And it was my understanding that the planning commission did not want anything above thirty-five feet, and so by, um, saying that we're not gonna have anything above thirty-five feet, then we can't, uh, say the opposite and say, but if you go above thirty-five feet, you have to have a site plan review.
Okay, okay. Um, commissioners, are there any other conversation or any other conversations or questions for Crystal? Go ahead, Commissioner Thielen.
I did notice there was a Scrivener's error in, in, it was, I brought it up at the last meeting. Uh, in seventeen-point-one-two-point-oh-five-oh on page two, uh, on D, it says, "Height of buildings in the, uh, six CD zone." It says, uh, "No building structure shall exceed thirty-five," but then the number is thirty in, in, uh, parentheses.
Okay, we'll check and make sure what that's supposed to be.
And I believe you said that it was actually thirty, that, that the number is thirty.
It is thirty.
Thirty?
So the written thirty-five should be changed to be a written thirty then, evidently.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, any other conversation deliberations? Anything? Okay, Commissioner Thielen.
Yeah, you know, I'd just like to say, um, this has not been an easy process for me. Um, I have read all of the documents for the last year. I've listened to all the testimony, and, um, there are a lot of good arguments. Uh, I think that we kind of got off on the wrong foot last year uh, when the, when the city council recommended a twenty-five-foot, um, uh, height limit, which I thought was low myself, and which generated a lot of, uh, well, discord. And, uh, uh, it looks to me like this is a compromise. This thirty-five foot is a compromise that is, is a good one. I, in doing the recent, some of the research that I did, uh, there are two towns, um, Yahat and Gearhart have thirty feet throughout the whole town. Uh, other towns that have a higher uh, limit on part of the town don't have that part of, don't have the limit, don't have a higher limit by the ocean. It's held back, which just creates a certain ambiance that, that I'm in favor of. Uh, I did give a call today to the, um, city manager Jody in, in Gold Beach and asked if there had been any legal repercussions from, uh, lowering the building heights, which is what they did, uh, in Gold Beach a few years ago. And she said there, uh, have been no challenges, uh, to, to the, uh, to those building heights. And I also called, uh, Carol Connell, which is the, um, the planner for Gearhart, and asked her the same question. And, uh, she said there have been no lawsuits and no, no, uh, she's never seen any issues about that. Um, so, you know, I, I, I hear people when they're saying that it, it's going to, to limit their, uh, their property or, or whatever. I don't want to limit anybody, but I think, I think the citizens are speaking. Uh, I think the majority of people in this town want to have the, the building heights lower than they are. So, uh, I just want to say that. This is not easy. And I appreciate all, uh, all of your work. And, and I've listened to, I appreciate all the people that have called in and, and, uh, uh, submitted documents. I've read them all.
Crystal, you had your hand up as well.
I can wait till planner comments. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Burnt.
Commissioner Burnt here. Um, I concur with Commissioner Thielen. Um, this has not been an easy process for any of us. We tried to consider all of the information that was presented to us by the, uh, community. Um, and the other thing that I think might be helpful, um, is to take a walk through the streets and, and look at the existing buildings. And to the best of our abilities, we have pretty much established that none of the existing buildings are taller than thirty-five feet. In fact, most of them, um, are in between twenty-eight to thirty. Um, so that might help just to get a better reference and scale of, of this, um, height of thirty-five feet, which in fact is less than what the city council was, was recommending. Um, so I hope that helps somewhat. Thank you.
Commissioners, do we have any other comments? Uh, Commissioner Schofield, Reinhold, Jesuit, or Rossi? Do we have any other comments? Okay, I think at this point, um, I'm gonna entertain a motion. And please remember, this is a recommendation to the city council. This is not a motion to enact it, if we want to go that direction. Commissioner Burnt?
Commissioner Burnt, I move to accept the proposed ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-zero-three in its entirety.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Reinhold has a second.
Commissioner Reinhold has a second. Do we have any discussion on this motion? Okay, I'm gonna go through. Commissioner Burnt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schofield?
No.
Commissioner Jesuit?
Yes.
Commissioner Thielen?
Yes.
Commissioner Reinhold?
Yes.
Commissioner Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Nerott is a yes. Motion carries five to one. I believe I counted. Okay. Please remember that this is a motion only for recommendation to the city council. The city council will have a hearing on November eighteenth at five-thirty PM. This meeting will be virtual as well, so you may go to that meeting to, uh, continue to testify for or against, um, their adoption of this particular ordinance. Thank you all very much. Now I'm gonna go down, uh, to seven planning matters. Um, what I would like to tell, um, the planning commission is we are putting vacation rentals on hold in for conversation in the planning commission. It's currently sitting in the city council. And until the city council decides what they want to do with it, we're, I'm not gonna bring it to the commission. Um, one of the top conversations that Mayor Cox and I had, um, and if you watched the last city council meeting, was that they wanted to have a workshop between the council and the com- planning commission to really discuss exactly what we want to do, um, what the city council wants us to do in regards to vacation rentals. So I'm gonna put that on hold until we get further direction. Um, I am a person that thinks that unless we have direction, we start throwing noodles against the wall to see what sticks, and even if we think it sticks, it may not go. Um, so we could do all this work and the council would be like, yeah, we don't know what you were spending your time doing. So, um, just so you all know, the vacation rentals will be put on hold and so we can figure out what the council exactly wants us to look for, or even if they want us to address it. Um, so, um, for other business, uh, for A, so A, other business, so announcement and communications. Crystal, it's on you for the city planner.
I would like to, um, recognize a couple things today. First, I would like to thank Pamela Burnt and her staff, I believe, for, uh, doing this little map that shows the difference, the different sections of the marine zone, near marine activity zone. Um, it's a little bit small here. We might be able to make it a little bit bigger in the code. Um, that's for question, but as long as we have it in the code and we have one in the file that's a little bigger, however it has to be on the page is fine. Anyway, I know that was a lot of work because zoning stuff is very precise. It goes into an ordinance and it stays there, sometimes for decades. And so, um, we worked to make it right, and she was very patient with us. Then I wanted to, um, compliment Patty and thank Patty. Patty is the glue between the city and a contract planner. I have to tell you that I would not want to and would not be able to work in a city as a contract planner if there was not someone there to, uh, take the ball and run with it on behalf of the city because the reason they hire a contract planner is because they don't have money for somebody full-time to be doing that. And Patty does a lot of other things besides planning. And the fact that she is there and works so much like a team with me, so that oftentimes it's just back and forth, is so helpful in Port Orford. And I, I know she's hoping to retire one of these months, and I honestly am not looking forward to it, though I know she is probably. And, and finally, I would like to, um, say that our chair, Chair Nerott, did a fantastic job. I almost think that, um, you were able to bring this virtual meeting into a, um, place where people could look at each other and, um, be organized enough to carry out this hearing. And it's taken a while for us to do this because that's just the nature of virtual hearings. They are way different. But the way you organized everybody, I mean, I wanted it, but you carried it out. And so, um, I just, I think that's great, and if we have to do it this way, we, we, we learn, we've learned something. So, thank you, and, um, that's all, that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Crystal. Um, planning commissioners, do you guys have any comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Burnt.
Commissioner Burnt here. Um, I...
Commissioner Burnt here. Um, I actually would like to make a request. Um, and I believe this, uh, is directed at Patty, uh, Patty Clark. Um, I was hoping to get a list to be included, um, of the planning clearance forms. Those are the new building permit requests. Um, just to have, for the planning commissioners to have a clear idea of what might be, um, developing in, in our community. Um, and I, it, if that is a permitted, uh, request, um, I think it just might clarify things, um, on some level.
Okay, so Crystal, correct me. I mean, a lot of these applications have, you know, personal information on it. Is that something I should be giving out?
Probably not the actual permits, I don't think.
No, I'm just suggesting.
I don't know what personal information is on there, but it's.
Okay, so when, at the city council meetings, um, in their packet, I give them a list of any new developments. I don't give them the details. I just say it's a single family, two-story house. That goes into the city council packet every month, if there is any. Is that what you're wanting?
So are you saying that that is, um, included in the minutes?
No, it's included in their report from planning.
Okay.
If there is any building permits, or not, we don't issue building permits, we issue clearance forms.
Okay, so you could, if you've, if you've done that for the council, you could also provide that to the commission, correct?
Um, yeah, I guess, for one more month.
Right. Okay.
Okay, are there any other?
Has not been any in a couple of months. Mainly because we've been on a moratorium, pretty much.
Right.
Now I can give, what I do get from the county once a month, uh, she sends me a report of building permits that were issued by the county. I can give you that report if you'd like. I mean, it's going to include Port Orford, uh, everything in Curry County.
Sure. Um, I, I think it might be something helpful for all of us to kind of examine and.
I can move, I can forward that to the planning commission if you'd like. Um, I just received one, I think it was either yesterday or today from the county for probably last month. And, I mean, that will tell you any permits that were issued for building.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, that would be helpful. Thank you, Patty.
Okay, are there any other comments from the planning commission? I just want to thank the commissioners. I know today has been a, um, slew of paperwork for you, sent at you. Um, and I thank you for your time in reading it. And I thank you, this hasn't been something that we've done within two months. This has been plenty of meetings, uh, for public to come and give us their opinions. And I will tell you that I, in, in reading some of the comments, and I read everything. I, we are not anti-growth. I'm not anti-growth. I, um, believe that we do need to be a progressive community that has affordable housing. I'm an employer in the city of Port Orford, and every year about Jan- or June, I do worry about if my employees who are moving out of, out of city can find a place to live in Port Orford. I truly believe employees who work in Port Orford in, in my, 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 in our school district should live in Port Orford. And yes, it's hard to find that. And so affordable housing is something that I do worry about. But I also, as a resident of Port Orford, um, want to keep the ambiance. Um, and I do think just based on some of our research, we are still generous compared to other places. Um, but, you know, I think it's important for us to look at all sides, and I appreciate listening to the pros and the cons. Um, I thought about them quite a bit. I drove around town quite a bit to think about what that looked like. Um, and so this was very, this was a difficult one um, for us. Like I said, we've been working on this for over, I think, over a year. Um, so much so that, you know, I can tell you that the wooden nickel across from Driftwood is like 32 feet tall. Um, and so, um, I appreciate all the time, commissioners, and to the city, uh, people of Port Orford. I appreciate your time and, and coming to talk to us. And I encourage you again, um, to go to the city council, um, meeting, I believe on November 18th, and discuss with them when they do the hearing. Again, if you have anything to include in writing in the city council packet regarding building heights, please send it to the city administrator, Jessica Ginsburg. I've put her email in the chat no later than November 12th, um, by noon, and she will make sure it gets to the city, um, council members. But again, you know, I think to say, you know, lack of progression, we're really, I, I would like to see, I would like to say that I, I really am working towards progression, um, to make our city better than it, uh, better than it was like yesterday. I remember when I moved here nine years ago, it has come a long ways in nine years, and I, I look forward to seeing where else it can go um, in the next, you, you know, the next years or whatnot. But, um, again, I appreciate everybody's, everybody's comments. And even the emails I received last night at 10 o'clock, appreciate them. Um, and so I could read them. So, uh, moving on, commissioners, do we have any other comments? Moving on to old and continuing business, like I said, with the vacation rentals, I am going to table that until we can meet with the council to see what they want us to do. Um, so last is agenda number nine, public considerations. Do we have any other public considerations? Mr. Lawton?
Yes, I'd just like to thank the council or the commission again for your hard effort. And I think in particular, I was very happy to see that we took the time as a community to look at other communities' best management practices. I think we can learn from other communities, and I think that helps us a lot. I also would like to reflect on what occurred with this recent ordinance. When I first moved to Port Orford, I was told by one individual who'd been there a long time, well, we just do things and then the public finds out. A lot of the locals don't stay informed. And I think what we've seen in this recent period is that now we have a large proportion of our community getting engaged in discussions about what we want our community to be. And I think that's healthy. I know it's a burden at times to your planning commission, to the city council, but I think it's a healthy, a healthy process. The last thing is I'd encourage you, I just read the 2018 Banden Housing Needs Assessment Study, which is very interesting. It may have some relevance to our community when we talk about affordable housing. And that's an excellent document. And, um, if you can't find it as a commission, I can surely send you the link because I think it's a well-written, well-analyzed, well-researched, uh, report. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawton. Anybody else? With that being said, moving to number 10 on the agenda, do I have a motion to adjourn? Come on, commissioners, we're going to be here all day if somebody doesn't motion. Go ahead, Commissioner Thielen.
I move we adjourn this meeting.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Rossi, I second.
Okay, I now declare this November 2nd, 2021, Port Orford Planning Commission meeting adjourned at 5:06 PM. Thank you all very much for coming. I appreciate your times and efforts. Thank you.
This conference is no longer being recorded.